We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll call Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Delka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second in any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
The post motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public have any comments they'd like to make? That's not on the agenda.
Craig?
Yes?
Um, there should be a gentleman there that wanted on the agenda today, and I told Kayla, and apparently, she forgot to put it on. Um, so if he is here today, was talking about smoke in Blackhawk County, he could probably talk under public comments, and if he made the trip. I think his name is Dan Devine or something.
That was Mike Devine, and I've decided to go ahead and be on the agenda for next week because it's going to be a little bit longer than the public comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Moving on to claims and payments. Who's handling those? Grant?
Uh, yeah, I don't have the sheet. Um, let me see if Billy has it.
Am I the only one cold?
Yep.
Yep.
That's not a good sign. There goes Billy. Thanks, Grant.
Yep, sorry.
No problem.
Total for the claims is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve? Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Later on, we'll be having presentations from the Blackhawk County Libraries by Kelly Stern, incubator farm planning report from Kamiar, and art project status report by Blackhawk County ARPA Committee. Do we want to do those now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We'll start off with Kelly Stern. Morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning. On behalf of the Blackhawk County Public Libraries, we just wanted to give you a quick update. Um, we just finished our busiest season of the year. Uh, our summer library programs draw more people into our libraries than we see at other times of the year. And, uh, it's encouraging that this year the numbers are going up again. Um, we're inching closer to where we were before COVID, which is really great. Um, the Waterloo Public Library and the Cedar Falls Public Library have increased our outreach efforts. Both of those libraries were at Pride Fest this year. Uh, Waterloo was also at National Night Out, Irish Fest, My Waterloo Days, and a number of other events as well. Cedar Falls, uh, did an outreach storytime at the Cedar Valley Arboretum, and we also did outreach to new UNI students. Um, but what I really wanted to share with you today is an update about our Dolly Parton's Imagination Library Project for Blackhawk County children under five. We, uh, were able to reach our fundraising goal to open up registration. You have to have your first two years' worth of funding before you can start registering children. We needed seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, we were able to raise seventy-six, and so we opened up registration June first. Uh, the national average for the first year is to register fifteen percent of the children who are eligible, and we've already, after three months, registered nineteen percent of our eligible population. Um, out of eighty-three hundred eligible children, over sixteen hundred are now registered. Um, we still need to raise two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So if there's ever a time when the Blackhawk County Supervisors, uh, can throw some money towards the project, um, I'm sure the families of Blackhawk County would be very appreciative. The feedback that we've received from families about this project has been overwhelmingly positive. Most comments are, finally, we have this in Blackhawk County, and, um, and it's a very rewarding project to do. Um, the Blackhawk County Public Library Directors were also doing special registration events out in the community to try to reach the kids who can benefit most from this program, who might not hear about it from their local public libraries because they don't have transportation or, or technology in their homes. So we want to make sure that we reach everybody and surpass the national average for our registration numbers. So thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Hearing, no. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Kamiar, you're ne- you're on.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I wanted to introduce Jody Higgarick, who, uh, manages the UNI Local Food Program, and we both will share, give you an update of what we've been up to. You've been a great supporter of this work, and go ahead, Jody.
Hi, good morning. I am Jody Higgarick. I'm the UNI Local Food Program Manager. Yeah, so like Kamiar said, um, for those of you who don't know, um, the UNI Local Food Program, we're at the Center for Energy and Environmental Education on the UNI campus. We have been in existence for, um, twenty-three years, and of course, that looks different, um, over these past few years. But we just wanted to update you on some of the things that we're doing and some exciting things that are coming to the state of Iowa that we're involved in locally. So our role is really to connect, um, local food buyers with our local food producers or farmers, and we're working to help those farmers, help consumers, help businesses, as well as look at that economic development. So, um, currently, um, this is one of the public, so this is just an overview. Do you guys have this in front of you? And this is just a publication that we put out every year for people to see, um, where to go to farmers markets, what producers we're working with, um, what businesses are buying local, for those of you who want to support those businesses. So we're helping farmers, we're helping institutions. We're currently working with about twenty-five-plus farmers, thirteen institutional local food buyers, and we're looking to, um, start collecting data again on how many local food purchases are made in Blackhawk County. So this is a snapshot of what happened in two thousand and sixteen, uh, but we haven't collected much data since then. So we're going to be working on that. We know there's a great opportunity to increase those local sales, work with more farmers, definitely get more institutional buyers on board. And if you look at the back of the page, it'll talk about some of our programs. But a couple of things I really wanted to highlight are, there is a lot of USDA funds coming to the state of Iowa through what we call the LFPA, which is the Local Food Purchase Agreement, and the LFS, the Local Food for Schools. So that is federal money that IDALS, um, has been able to receive that's going to go into the hands of our local producers, um, and disadvantaged farmers, as well as those who need it, as well as our schools, giving our schools more support to buy local food. So, um, we are involved in that on a local level. Um, there's not any money coming to us from the state of Iowa to help coordinate this, but it's a very important job, and we really want to see more people, especially those schools, buying local food. So I'm going to turn it over to Kamiar.
So to kind of wrap this up, I wanted to say that if you see thriving farmers markets in Blackhawk County, that's our work. We've been doing this since ninety-seven. There is no, we're kind of a self-appointed uh, local food coordinator of our region. Nobody else is doing this work. We're the ones, Jody is the one who contacts SingleSpeed, contacts UNI Dining, contacts local school and saying, these are the farmers around us. We could be buying from them. The, invest in local food infrastructure development. So there's no, this hasn't happened kind of by accident. We've been at this for a long time, and you guys have been a good supporter of this work. We're at a point where we're, in order to rev things up, and in order to invest in the local food infrastructure and the kind of work that Jody talked about, again, at some point when the county has the funds to support that, we'll be happy to kind of develop a professional service agreement with county, two government entities, to get very specific, quantifiable, uh, work done, like increasing the number of institutions in our county that are investing in local farms. One of the projects that is on our drawing board is an incubator farm. An incubator farm is a place, a piece of land, that helps be aspiring, beginning farmers to have access, to get going, to get, to have access to land without a big upfront cost. That's what we call an incubator farm. Des Moines has a wonderful example of it, where, where all kinds of beginning farmers, recent refugees who are from rural areas, who know how to farm, don't have access to land, could get going. So that's another project we have on the drawing board, because if we want more fruits and vegetables from here, we need more farmers. So that's like one of the big secret, uh, of our state is that we live in a very agricultural region, and yet hardly anything we eat comes from our region. That's not, there's something wrong here. And that's what we have been trying to correct, and our colleagues all over the country, to rebuild local food infrastructure that feeds us, the very people around us. We should be, we should be building our food system. And some of the counties in populated areas in Iowa have invested in, uh, in local food in their counties. Dubuque County is a perfect example. Johnson County, we're, again, you have been a supporter of this work in the years past. So we just wanted to give you an update and see if you have any questions for us, and other dimensions that interest you. We're here for the long haul. We've been doing this. We're very committed to this. We think that's essential for a community to feed itself and build the infrastructure to feed ourselves.
I have questions.
Sure.
Um, Jody, you said there's funding available through the USDA that's coming into Iowa, but, but you have been unable to grab any of those funds?
A lot of the funds go towards the food itself, and not so much the connection and the management or the coordination of where that food is going.
Okay. And in the past, we have supported your efforts financially. Uh, it, it appears this year there was a miscommunication. However, if I'm not mistaken, we still have fifty thousand dollars in the budget, where we had allocated funding to the Family Children's Council and Riverview. Uh, so I anticipate we are going to have another round.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we, we expect to have another round of, uh, having local organizations apply for these funds. And, uh, we will certainly make you aware of this. I, for one, support your efforts, and, uh, I hope we can again allocate some funding. Of course, it's a decision for the whole board. But I hope that we can utilize some of this funding to assist you in your endeavor.
I think.
We're grateful. Thank you.
I think in addition to that, the ARP funding provides us opportunity to maybe do, um, some of the larger things, like investing in this incubator farm, uh, which I think is a really brilliant idea, but.
And that later, you'd come to the group, I guess, when we do presentations, if we're interested in that.
Happy to. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting this started years ago, Kamiar.
Thank you.
Next up is the ARP Project Status Report by the Blackhawk County ARPA Committee.
And, uh, I'll go ahead and get this started. Uh, bear with us. We're in, uh, we're still in transition, uh, after, after James's departure, and trying to get our minds wrapped around everything and, and working with our consultants in that regard. But what I want to do is kind of give the board a, a brief overview of where all of the pending projects are at uh, relative to their prior approvals and the evaluations by our consultants. Uh, understand that the evaluations are based upon a burden of proof continuum scale that has levels one through ten, ten being the highest burden, one being, uh, something that would be a, um, a lost revenue project. So really, uh, for a, a qualified expense, or you're looking at two as the easiest to approve, and anything above that gets progressively, uh, more challenging. Some of these are still in an exploration stage, which means that there are questions to be answered. Uh, there could be a change of where they're designated on that scale. So, um, without, uh, any further delay, I'll go ahead and start with, uh, and I'm going in the order that is on some correspondence that was sent to us recently by our consultants.
Want to make sure they have, everybody have the same thing in front of them?
I want to make sure the, does the board have, uh, this document in front of them that was provided to us from Baker Tilly, who is our, our ARPA consultant? I've got several documents from them.
This one.
This one.
There's one that's a summary.
All right. I don't have that one. Let's see. That's it. Yes, okay. There we go. All righty. And that's the order. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and go in just so that we are all, uh, following along in the same direction. Uh, first project listed on here is from Hickory Hills Park. Uh, it's for the sewage project. Just says, I think, might say lagoon. Well, on there it just says Hickory Hills, but this is for the sewage project. Uh, the approved estimate is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe the current estimate, uh, has risen to five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this has been previously approved by the board. It is considered a Level Two Burden of Proof project, so that is one of the more easily provable eligibility projects. Yes, Grant?
Can I just make sure? I, we gave you a lot of stuff here, and not everything has everything notated on it, but this, uh, this white sheet is, tries to be a summary of everything, so it has the burden of proof level, it has the approved estimate and the current estimate, unless those aren't available for some reason, and whether it was previously approved by the board. So, um, I, I guess I would suggest.
The same as this, is it?
Yep. All along what goes to there. They are in the same order, but, uh, they, they don't all have the same information. The, the color one doesn't have the, uh, the estimates on it, uh, but it does have handwritten on there with the burden of proof level.
Just one quick question, Mike.
Yeah.
If some of these have already been, we've already approved some of these, why are we going back through them?
Well, my.
Just for proof, or because of the burden of proof? Is that what we're looking at?
Um, yes, we wanted to take another look at, uh, at what our consultants evaluated as burden of proof. I, I also understood that the board had requested an update on all of these and what the committee's considerations of these were. And for that reason, uh, I, I thought it was best to not leave any out.
Hmm.
Um, so the, uh, so as I was saying, this, uh, this Hickory Hills wastewater project, uh, current estimate is up by seventy-five thousand to five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The evaluation from Baker Tilly is complete, and the burden of proof is Level Two on that. Uh, on the Sheriff's Evidence Processing Facility, now this one, uh, is still in the exploration stage. Uh, currently, the, the estimate is one point five million dollars. We are in the process of, uh, or the sheriff, I should say, is in the process of arranging a written justification. Shaih Hattery Engineering, uh, is assisting in that process, and, uh, and as are our consultants at Baker Tilly. Uh, currently, Baker Tilly has this as a Level Ten Burden of Proof. Uh, I think there's some possibility that that level changes, and the reason I say that is because Level Ten is non-enumerated capital of greater than a million dollars. Uh, there's no question that this is a, this is a capital project of greater than a million dollars. However, the question is whether it's enumerated, uh, or not in the final analysis. If it, if it ends up being considered an enumerated capital project, that will change its level, I believe, to Level Six, uh, which is somewhat considerable. Uh, it also gives us another avenue to justify it. Uh, I'll have a similar comment later on about another project. Uh, number three, uh, this is a records digitization project for the auditor's office. Um, this is estimated now at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Baker Tilly has completed its evaluation of this. Uh, it's considered a Level Two Burden of Proof project. Uh, fourth one is the Elections Workstations Project. Um, the initial estimate was higher when it was approved by the board. It's now considered, uh, to be around twenty-five thousand dollars. And in fact, I believe from talking, uh, with the Elections Manager, that that is still, that's actually considered a safe estimate at this point. Um, this is for work stations that are required due to a shorter, earlier voting window. Uh, I believe these are for the ones going in the, uh, basement of the courthouse, actually. And, and so those are going to be, going to be done here pretty soon. Um, I, I believe one way or the other, but we had them evaluated for, uh, ARPA funding. Uh, currently, the Baker Tilly, uh, Baker Tilly placed this, uh, as a number, or a category seven on burden of proof, and that category, uh, is, I believe, just give me a minute here, non-enumerated capital of less than a million dollars. Um, one of the challenges, uh, that we've found, and we've talked to two separate consultants and two separate firms about this, uh, and they're, they've been consistent in their advice, one of the, one of the things we've found is that when you're making capital improvements to existing facilities, and sometimes they consider those improvements that would have been made regardless, uh, they, they tend to, they tend to think that's going to be a little more challenging in terms of qualification under an ARPA expense category. Having said that, the justification for this is reducing, uh, the crowding both of, of our election workers in, in the current general election that's about to begin, and, uh, and by doing so, it should reduce at least marginally some of the crowding among, uh, early voters. Uh, and that's obviously still taking play, going to be taking place in the courthouse for at least this election. Um, number five project, EMCO Package Builder. This is a, um, this is, I believe, uh, from the, uh, or this is, I know, from the IT Department. Um, my understanding is this was already approved, and the estimate is thirteen hundred dollars. Uh, it is considered a, a Level Two Burden of Proof. Uh, next one, Network Equipment. Now, this is a combination of, of projects for the IT Department. It initially was at, uh, an estimate of four hundred and forty-three thousand. That estimate has grown to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, spoken with, uh, IT Director LU about this. Uh, he informs me that the cost of certain equipment, I believe, switches in particular, has gone up considerably, and I believe the board's been informed of that separately by him. Uh, it was previously approved at the four hundred and forty-three thousand dollar estimate. That is a Level Two Burden of Proof project. Um, next one's another records digitization project. This one for the Recorder's Office. Uh, this was previously approved at one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars as an estimate. Uh, the current estimate remains the same. This is also a Level Two Burden of Proof project. Uh, next one, and we are on number seven. Uh, this is a conservation project. It's for Blackhawk Park, and it's for renovation of the shower facility. Current, what's it?
Number eight.
I'm sorry, number eight. Uh, my bad. Um, currently, what we're looking at is we're looking at the engineering costs, and it's, uh, it's being estimated around ten thousand dollars for that. Um, that has been, uh, the consultant's evaluation of this has been completed. They have placed this as a burden of proof, uh, Level Six, uh, project. Uh, what that is, is again, not, uh, enumerated capital, no, just give me a second. Enumerated capital of less than a million dollars. That is because this is a capital project. It's for a shower facility at a park. Uh, the justification, um, which we don't have to technically provide a written justification for this one because it's under a million, but the justification for this project for, for ARPA reasons is increased use of the parks and damage that our parks have sustained from increased use due primarily to the pandemic. Uh, there, the reason that some of these place a little higher on the burden of proof scale that we've, uh, learned is because they don't fall within what they refer to as qualified census tracts. Uh, these are, you know, poverty zones, if you will, or areas that have had, uh, they, they say they've been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. That is our understanding as a committee of why, uh, this is currently, uh, put at Level Six, and I believe that's, since this is completed, that is where it stands. Um, next, another conservation project, number nine, Cedar Valley Nature Trail. This continues to be in the exploration stage, and I, uh, I believe that I have some additional written communication to forward the board. Um, the board's aware I've got a few irons in the fire going on right now, uh, so bear with me a little bit. But this was previously approved, I understand, as part of a larger package. Uh, currently, however, because of the Destination Iowa grant that we have received, the county's obligation has gone down to an estimated two point three million dollars. Uh, this is currently showing up as a burden of proof Level Ten. Uh, the, that is, again, that, uh, non-enumerated capital, uh, project of greater than a million dollars. But understand, again, this is an, in the exploration stage. There are reasons that this could fall probably to that, I, I would guess, uh, to that level, give me just a moment here. It would be to the, uh, some type of an enumerated capital. It would be between one and ten million dollars. And there are justifications under the final rule for this type of project. But again, um, and I, I know this kind of might fly in the face of, of some of your logic. If your logic's anything like mine, it's a bike trail, but it does not, uh, and it's, it's a many miles-long bike trail, but it doesn't, uh, it does, it is not confined to a qualified census tract area. Uh, moving right along, number ten, this is the, uh, the new septic project for the McFarland, for McFarlane Park. Um, this is, my understanding is this is an estimated sixty thousand dollar project. Seventy-nine hundred dollars, uh, was what the, well, so it was evaluated currently, and that was for engineering. Uh, that evaluation is complete, and the consultants have placed that as a burden of proof Level Two. Um, Sigel Cove Park, uh, Conservation is looking at putting a, uh, shower building there. My understanding is this is a, a type of a pre-built or, um, kind of modular-type building, um, because they have an existing, uh, septic facility over there already from a, from a prior camp host. Uh, Baker Tilly has completed the evaluation. The estimate is seventy-five thousand dollars, and the burden of proof level assigned has been Level Six. Next one, uh, that we're now at number twelve. Uh, this is again conservation. We're now looking at ADA-compliant playgrounds. These are at four different parks. My understanding is that our county park playgrounds at all of these parks are not currently ADA-compliant. Um, that would be, uh, that is estimated at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, my understanding is it has been previously approved by the board, and, uh, consultants have assigned a burden of proof Level Six, uh, to these. Uh, next, again in conservation, uh, is an HVAC project, and that is to, uh, renovate and upgrade the HVAC system at the Conservation Headquarters. My understanding is that will also include new heating and cooling. Um, the reason that this gets categorized as enumerated is because, uh, air handling systems are an enumerated use of ARPA funds under the final rule, as well as under the preliminary rules. Uh, the estimate for that is currently two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Looks like it was approved at a slightly higher figure, um, and that is, uh, at, uh, burden of proof Level Six. Uh, the next one, uh, is the, uh, minibus or the turtle-top van. Uh, my understanding is conserv, is this was already approved, and Conservation, I believe, has, uh, approved that and may have, uh, entered into a contract for purchase on that. Um, that is listed as burden of proof Level One, but understand that that's, that's because they did. they did not, Baker Tilly did not find that it fit under an enumerated use, under, or non-enumerated use allowable under the ARPA final ruling, and so it would have to be covered, if covered with ARPA funds, by lost revenue. And so that's why that received a burden of proof level one rating. Next one is Washburn Sewer Lagoon Improvements. The, you'll note in the notes, there's procurement guidelines, questions, and I am communicating with Ben Delagardel about that. Recall that that was one of the very first items approved by the board, and at the time the guidance that the county had received from multiple outside sources before much in the way of a, of an actual ruling had, had come down, and certainly not a final ruling, we were told that you didn't have to engage in competitive procurement. That turned out to not be true, so I've been, I've been communicating with Ben Delagardel to see where he's at on things. Currently, he wants to talk to me about that. My schedule hasn't permitted that just yet, but it should. It may, however, be the week after next because of a couple of trials I have coming up. And so we're, we're just trying to see with him to say, hey, look, anything that you've got left to get, try to get it through competitive procurement according to the federal guidelines. However, Baker Tilly, assuming we, we follow procurement, they've assigned this a burden of proof level two, and like mentioned in the past, wastewater, water quality project, projects tend to be a little easier as a, as a qualified expenditure under ARPA.
Chair, I have a question. Mike, it appears these rules, they evolved from the initial rules to the, we're getting into the final rules, they're becoming clarified, but all along it appears that water and sewer infrastructure has been prominent in projects we could utilize these funds for.
Generally, yes, but that, that comes with a caveat, however, and that's that you still have to, you still have to look at whether the procurement rules were followed, and then if any of these go to departments or entities outside of the county, we have to engage in, in oversight of that. You have to do sub-recipient monitoring. So, for example, we've seen some talk, I think, on the board about, about doing things cooperatively with some of our cities. We've seen some talk about doing things with outside organizations, maybe watershed organizations. We would have to monitor how they use those funds, and a good way to think about that would be to look and see what safeguards those organizations have in place, preferably some outside accounting or monitoring organization that makes sure that they can give us on fairly short notice a report on how things are being spent and how they're complying with the rules. So, yeah, the, absolutely, we are seeing from our consultants and others that water quality projects tend to be lower on the burden of proof scale.
It seems like even current events are having an impact on items such as this, like in Jackson, Mississippi, and longer term, Flint, Michigan.
That, that certainly could be said, but what, what we're looking for primarily under ARPA is we're looking at how it relates to the, the prior pandemic or the existing pandemic, I think would be the, the accurate way to put it, and then to, to a lesser extent, on preparedness for a future pandemic. One of the themes we often hear from our consultants, as well as from the county's own independent auditor, is these projects are generally supposed to apply to the current But having said that, obviously, when you are, when you are better handling things under the current pandemic, and it, it is still ongoing, you are better prepared, at least that's the idea, I'm not claiming to be an expert on pandemics, but you would be better prepared to, to handle future pandemics as well. And I think when you look at other places and their water quality projects, I think that there's, there's certainly better preparedness for health, for pandemics in general, and when I think of Flint in particular, I think of, you know, the poisoned water situation. So, moving right along here, the last three projects are not approved, I don't believe. With regard, if they are, they're still in an exploration stage regardless. For one, number 19, that is a, that's an elevator improvement to bring an elevator back into service over at Pinecrest. The consultants have assigned that a burden of proof level seven. Again, this is very much looking like a, a project that is improving an existing facility. I have not been provided any questionnaire, anything on this, so this, this one came admittedly as a bit of a surprise to me when we received last evening's communication, and I will be reaching out to Baker Tilly, Tilly to obtain what they, what they got. And my guess is it's one of those things that, that slipped while James is on his way out. Then, under secondary roads, computer equipment, that was actually a, a questionnaire that came in from engineering fairly recently, I think it was late August that we received that. That is being evaluated by Baker Tilly right now, and is in its final review stage. This is an estimated $11,000 project. The purpose of this project is to enable, better enable in-the-field work by secondary roads personnel, as well as working remotely from home if necessary. At this point, Baker Tilly has, has assigned it a burden of proof level two, and I think it falls right in line with much of what the IT department is doing. Finally, there is a, number 18 is Health Department Improvements. Right now, I'm not seeing what exactly those are. I believe that they may be talking about moving the clinic, which has been discussed and not yet approved. However, from the documentation I received, I, I haven't seen a questionnaire, and they indicated that it was under a million dollars, which does not sound like a, like a renovated clinic to me. So, because of that, there are some questions that need to be answered, and I, while I knew that our consultants were aware of the possibility of a clinic, just based upon their receipt of the, the space study that was done a while back for the county, I don't know what exactly they're going off of right here, and that kind of surprised me to see on their list last evening. So, we'll be following up with them on that. So, that is the, that is the projects that are, that are currently in the hopper, so to speak, for the county, for ARPA.
Mike, when you say currently in the hopper, meaning all the ones that the committees reviewed, I mean, the board's approved, I think way back in phase one and phase two, and moved through the committee, the committees approved them, they went on to Baker Tilly, and this is the status where we're at with those?
Exactly, with a couple of exceptions. The exceptions are the Health Department improvements, those have not been discussed at committee. The elevator improvements have not been discussed at committee. The evidence processing and Cedar Valley Nature Trail have been discussed considerably at committee. However, we're not at a point of a final evaluation yet to say move it on with a recommendation at this point. And finally, the engineers' computer equipment project, the last committee meeting, that we had not yet received a preliminary response, in, in part because I just provided it to Baker Tilly at that point, that's not because anybody was dragging their feet on that, but the, we haven't seen anything back from them yet on that for that reason, and so we have to discuss that at committee yet. So, those five have not gone through committee. Some of these, like, for example, the minibus, technically went through prior to the actual formation of a committee, however, there was a, a group of us, or a quasi-committee, if you will, there were four of us who got together to discuss those items, and then presented to the board on that, I believe James presented to the board on those. So, I hope that answers your question. I know it's not a clear yes or no, but wanted to make sure I provided the nuance there.
I've got several questions and comments. Mike, so thus far, Board of Supervisor approval, now, first of all, we, we were provided $25,489,519, correct?
That's my understanding.
So far, we have earmarked $11,198,245.96.
That is also my understanding.
So, and for projects on hold, we have 5.5 million, 252,000, and then, and half of that is a $2.5 million jail addition.
I can confirm the 5 million. I would need to read down a little further to confirm. I'll, I'll take your word for it on the jail addition.
Yeah, the comment I make is I don't support that whatsoever.
And I, I was gonna say, I don't think there's been approval of a jail addition either.
No, there hasn't been.
No, there's not.
And I see what you're talking about now, Mr. Traulka.
There hasn't been much public discussion about it, and I think there needs to be. But my point at this venture is we still have $15 million that we gotta decide how to utilize, and every day, we're losing valuable time.
Yeah, we have around 14 million left, a little over that. That's based on estimates, of course. I won't comment on, on losing valuable time. There is time, and yes, time is passing, but the longer we wait, the harder it is to get these things actually into the, the necessary phases by the deadlines that have been laid out by the Treasury.
Well, I know the board wants direction, and they haven't been getting much direction from the Board of Supervisors, or the committee wants direction. We, we haven't, we've been remiss in providing direction, in my opinion. I'm so torn on this because here we were provided with $25 million, and I see that our national deficit is 31 trillion, but if we don't use this money, if we don't use all of this, I also feel like we are negligent as a board in not utilizing it to the benefit of our local residents, all of our local residents, whether they're rural, they live in our cities, whatever. So, I'm encouraging the board to, let's, we got some work to do, and let's start utilizing this funding to the benefit of our, all of our taxpayers, regardless of where they live. Let's make some decisions, let's give the committee some direction, because I don't want to give one, one red cent back.
And kind of piggybacking on that comment, I believe it was two weeks ago, I, I mentioned on behalf of the committee that we are looking for some direction as to, and I don't know if a, a working session for the board would be in order on this, but, but some, some discussion by the board as to how they want to go forward, both from a risk perspective and from a specific projects perspective. Capital projects can be considered, for sure, and so, and some of these, I, I believe there's, there's a way to justify, for example, Cedar Valley Nature Trail, plus we've already approved that, but I think there's a way to justify that under an expense category. But the question is where, what's the board's risk tolerance, and the committee needs to learn that, and I think the board needs to discuss that, because I think the board isn't sure what collectively our risk tolerance is. So, there's that question. There are lower risk projects, as I believe Mr. Traulka was, was suggesting here, which include water quality projects. Those can include sewer projects, they can also include a number of conservation projects. There are, finally, there are a number of organizations that would be more urban in nature in, in the type of projects they would be doing, and I realize that that hasn't always been the focus of our, our county government, but, but when we talk about qualified census tracts, most of those, if not all of them, are going to be located in the county's urban areas, and there are a number of projects that would be approvable, probably through organizations that assist people in those areas.
So, there are many low-risk projects, especially if it's under a million dollars.
That's my understanding, yes.
But if we, let's say we spend 2.5 million on a project, and then the federal government comes back and says, well, this doesn't fit any of the category, then we have to find other ways to pay for that 2.5 million dollar project, correct?
That would be correct, subject to the possibility that you pay for it under lost revenue. As long as it is a legitimate county project, it can be covered, or county expense, you can cover it under lost revenue, all of that money has currently been allocated for wages, the full 10 million that we were allotted, so yet, it's not actually being, it's not actually gone to wages, we just needed something to allot it for that was qualified. And so because of that, those projects that are not, that don't qualify, could be qualified under that, but here's the problem, if you're, if you're paying it back, you're losing the money.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
I guess from my perspective, I want to see, you know, a more, I want to see a detailed proposal on, on a new public health clinic in the Health Department, and then, because I, because I think that, to me, is a priority coming out of this pandemic, is improving the quality of that, those services, especially given we've got another endemic that they're dealing with now with monkeypox, we need to improve those, the quality of, of the facilities that we have. So, after we get through that, then I want to see us start funding some water quality stuff, both through the different watersheds that we're a part of, but also teaming up with these communities that need our assistance, and then open up the rest of it potentially to community projects, like we heard about the incubator farm today. I'd like to see some housing initiatives. I think housing would be a great place for us to potentially invest in, you know, given that that's our, residential housing is, is where our tax base comes from, and we've got an older housing stock in this community that prevent, that presents an opportunity, I think, for, for investment, and there's a couple of models I'd like to look at, things that have been done in places like Dubuque, to, to explore. And so that's, that's where my thinking is, I want to see this public health clinic, I want to see a ticket price on that, I want to see that done, and then open up the rest of this funding to, to, to water quality and community projects.
Now, a couple of, of quick responses on that, Mr. Shorts. Number one, on the housing ideas, and for that matter, on watershed projects, the committee would like to hear from the board or from these organizations what they would propose so that those can be run through consultants to determine eligibility. On the public health clinic, we have never explored with our consultants a, an actual new standalone, a public health clinic. So far, that hasn't appeared to be the direction that's been given. There were a lot of concerns about eligibility of a renovated portion of the Pinecrest building for public health. The talk, as I recall it, was that of, of the possibility of moving public, the public health clinic down to the first floor, and then taking some of the offices that it would replace and moving those up to its fifth floor location. That was met with some considerable resistance in conversations with our consultants. We haven't discussed with them a new standalone clinic, so if they throw some cold water on that, don't be totally surprised, but yet I'm, I understand there, there could be a possibility that that would change the dynamic enough, since it's no longer an existing facility, that maybe they would look at it differently. So, just, just understand, there are, we're never out of the woods, for sure.
And that's interesting, because that's, doing renovations over there seems like an obvious choice of utilization of ARP funds, yet it isn't.
It was with amazement that we reacted to some of this, so much so that we, we then went to a different consultant with a different firm, namely with our, with our county's accounting firm, or auditing firm, I mean, they confirmed all of it.
Really?
Yep.
But sewage and water, sewage treatment and water quality has been consistent?
Those tend to be consistently approvable, or at least they, they consider them low on the burden of proof scale. Nobody will provide any guarantees.
Well, my comments would be, I thought the process we were taking in this was really kind of justification of the projects that the board had approved and we wanted to move forward on, and that's somewhat what the committee and Baker Tilly have been doing for us already. Now, you've got to that stage where many of these projects are to that point, and I thought that was the point, only hired the consultant, they wanted to meet with us, and kind, that's what we were hoping to, to help get some direction. with us, and kind, that's what we were hoping to, to help get some direction on how we can spend this. And this, like I say, it's a relatively large amount of money, and we'd like it to go to the best use of our residents here. So how we could do that. And we've not ever had that second meeting with them. I don't know if, but to me, that's where we kind of get some guidance there, and then we get ready to look at what projects we want to do and how we can get them done.
And so I, I think that would, and that was my understanding, as the next step that the board desired on this, was to actually have at least one of our consultants participate in a meeting with the board, and, and be able to answer questions. And this has been nice, hearing a lot of questions about this. I think they need to hear those too, so that we, they, they for sure understand what our concerns are. I know they understand what my concerns have been when I met with them, and when James had met with them, and a lot of times, it was the two of us on the phone, or the two of us on a Teams meeting with them. But I do think there is a, I do think they need to hear it from the board as well.
Well, and I do think we were looking at projects and thinking, what had been done? And if we have questions, ask them directly too, because I myself have a question of how we cannot fund a public health clinic, and how we can fund a building that's an evidence intake facility. Not that, not that both couldn't be needed, but how do you say no to one and yet to another?
It seems antithetical to what our understandings were under this. And when you read the, the final rule, it looks, at least at first glance, you again, got to get in the weeds on, on some of the, some of the infrastructure language, but public health, you know, has been front and center in it. And so there is, it certainly surprises me, or has surprised me. But we've gone, we've pushed back on that, and that's been more.
Maybe that's what we need to hear or do, or whatever.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see us look, you know, we're talking about Pinecrest. That building is old and well-structured, but being well-structured, it's going to take a lot of monies thrown into that to redo it the way that it probably have to be done. We'd be better off trying to find a building that's vacant here in town, that there, there's a lot of vacant buildings that could be utilized to put a, put that facility in, and maybe combine some other bill, or offices in here that we've looked at in the past, because we're overcrowded with the area here for when we have our elections. We could do, do some great things yet that we haven't done. But I would like to see us move forward on these projects that we've already okayed at least twice.
Well, and so what's, what, the reason that the projects were on hold was to obtain this independent analysis.
Right.
That has been obtained on the great majority of these now, because they hadn't been, because they hadn't actually started, even though they were approved, and because the money hadn't yet been spent, the committee's opinion was that the board still had the power to reconsider on that, now that, now that we've seen evaluation on those things. So that's why it's, that's why, as a committee, we thought it was best for the board to, to be able to say, when, when you're ready, say, yes, go ahead, we're greenlighting this now. All right. Now, to respond, just one second, I wanted to respond on this public health thing. Another, another interesting aspect, Mr. White, about your idea to go get another building, we've talked about renovating Pinecrest, I think we've talked maybe about building something. Anything over a million dollars, when you justify it, it requires a written justification that's done in, at least in part, by an independent firm. That's why we've got Chive Hattery working on one for the evidence facility. And in that justification, at least two alternatives to the proposed project. So at least three different alternatives, if you will, have to be considered, and you can consider more. So it might be one of those opportunities, although that justification process will cost some money, and that money is payable by ARPA, that might be an opportunity to say, well, let's explore option one, option two, option three. And, and they could say, option one is renovating Pinecrest's first floor. Option two is acquiring a building known to be vacant for sale or going on the market soon, and they could specify, option three could be a different building. Option four could be acquiring a lot and constructing something. And I'm just, I'm just speaking off the cuff here. I don't know what options the board would like considered, but those are, that would provide us an opportunity to compare those things, especially if it resulted in different, a different assignment of burden of proof level.
Because my concern is these that have a high burden of proof, that will complete the project, and they'll come back and they'll say, well, we're sorry, the funds aren't eligible.
And, and that is possible. I, that, that's the real juggernaut we're dealing with here, is there's very little, if anything, to go on in the way of prior example. We just have to interpret the ruling as written. That's why we've, we've hired a consultant in this regard. It's, and the writing is not, you know, clear as a bell, right? So.
But you're saying those are the number 10 projects, and they're really being explored. Now that number could come down, just we don't know to what level.
That is the hope, and yet I would say that level's going to be, if I had to predict, and this is just a prediction, but if they come down, and that's an if.
Yeah.
It would be down to enumerated capital between 1 and 10, which would actually, and I believe I mentioned 6 earlier, but it would actually be 8 that it would come down to. And so that is, that is where probably our best hope as to a category would be. The reason that it's enumerated, in my opinion, is because promotes healthy living, and that's what we're looking at as a justification. But the reason it's still going to be as high as it is, is because of the anticipated expenditure of it, and the fact that it doesn't meet some of those, fall into some of those qualified census tract categories, which would then perhaps move it down to a lower, a lower category altogether.
Do we know if, or go ahead.
Well, it's, and it sounds, it sounds like a good next step would be to have Baker Tilly come in and answer our questions in regard to every single one of these projects. And then, then we make a decision as to whether or not we, we proceed. And I can tell you right now, if a project maintains a 10, I can't support it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, even 8 might be kind of high, too.
I mean, my, my, my risk tolerance, I mean, 2, I'm comfortable with a 2.
And some of those can, can fall into the, the lost revenue category. My understanding is we're committed on Cedar Valley Nature Trail, for example. That was part of the condition of taking this.
Yes.
These Destination Iowa funds. So there's other, there's, there's other ways we can pay for those, I'm sure. And I don't want to speak like a finance director, because aside from sitting here, I'm the furthest thing from it, but that's my understanding from, from our committee discussions and from discussions with our prior finance director. So those, that's the discussion the board needs to have, is what is our risk tolerance and what are our priorities? And I think, this is my opinion, my personal opinion, and not necessarily the opinion of the committee. I think one way to accomplish that would be to, to schedule a work session as part of a board meeting, maybe at the end of it or something. It would be public, but it wouldn't need to involve any, any input by others, or you could have input by others.
Is that to go over all these again, or just a high-risk ones?
To talk, well, you could go over some higher.
Or the ones, or the other ones that we have ideas on.
Exactly.
Because I'd like to see some stuff moving in that direction, too, so we can start putting a pedal to the metal and getting some of this stuff done.
And that's the biggest issue, is finding a way to spend the other 14, 15,000.
One other question, Mike, is, like these towns that got the projects already going, you know, with your wastewater and stuff, can we invest in those since they're already ongoing projects? Or, you know, is, is there going to throw a wrench in this, in on something, on one of those?
I foresee some concern. I foresee some concern. I don't want.
That's what I think.
I mean, my answer is a solid maybe. But the, but, but honestly, the reason that I see some concern is not because these projects wouldn't have been eligible.
Right.
But it's, it, it's two-pronged. Number one, they, some of these projects, as I understand them, were already in progress.
Right.
And so they might not be looked upon as ARPA-eligible, because they were already going beforehand. However, they are wastewater projects, so that would suggest they might be eligible. The other prong of this concern comes from the fact that we have subrecipient monitoring, and we have to see if our consultants would have any concerns about the fact that a lot of the work, as I understand it, and I might not be correct, is that some of these projects are already started, therefore they've been procured. We don't know what procedure's been followed, or how we can anticipate that the federal government may audit that procurement process.
I think this solution is quite simple. We run it through the committee, run it through the consultants, and see what they say.
And we would need, but we would first need to have completed questionnaires by these other, you know, communities, or whoever entity is looking at, whether it be a department, an organization, a municipality, whoever it might be. We need to have completed questionnaires, and then there, there's a good possibility that Baker Tilly would need, you know, some kind of an electronic meeting or phone call to follow up on certain questions that were left unanswered within that process before they can do an evaluation.
Well, we have some county department projects that haven't gone through the process yet, I believe. But there were some department that thinks they're, they had projects that were approved by the board in Phase 1 or Phase 2, that haven't gone through the committee or Baker Tilly.
That is definitely correct. I need to talk, for example, to building maintenance to see if they've submitted, or if they're submitting questionnaires. I don't believe questionnaire's been submitted on some of their ideas. I know that there has been discussion with Baker Tilly about implementing portions, and of course, none of this has been approved by the board, but implementing portions of recommendations of those who completed the space study, specifically that one discussion I've been involved in as relates to that. We've talked about the health clinic, of course, but another discussion has been about the moving of the elections office. And, and a big part of the reason is because the crowding here on second floor, and even down to first floor, has been, was obvious during the 2020 general election.
You know, that's a project where I'm saying, let's, let's try to utilize ARP funds. And this is a good example. And it gives, maybe this gives the committee some direction. It gives the board the idea, in particular, how I feel about this specific project. Let's try to run it through ARP. If it doesn't happen, I'm willing to find other funding mechanisms to move elections over to where it needs to be.
We have other ones in place, yeah.
Yeah, I think we had some things identified by the space study that were very critical to us moving sooner than later, and so that was one, I think, the election.
Well, we've been spinning our wheels on that. That could have been done too, a long time ago. Across the street, could have been done.
To both Mr. Traulka's and Ms. Layland's point, too, if you're comfortable with the fact that we are going to be paying for them anyway, then you can try to justify them under ARPA, or, but that comes with the risk of paying it back. Or maybe you find a different source of funding. But I, I do believe, as Mr. Traulka just said, there's definitely a cogent argument as to why elections should move. That one, I personally believe in. But having said that, it's going to be one of those non, or one of those enumerated, I believe, otherwise non-enumerated, capital expenditures, and it would, I believe, fall under a million dollars, which decreases the burden somewhat, which is good, but it's very close, so.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing and the committee's doing as well, Mike, but it's a critical role, I think, for our finance director, is presenting those options to us as well, because we need to know what kind of money we're spending, or what we're talking about spending, and where that puts us and the taxpayers' dollars, I guess, when we're starting to use them rather than ARPA. But we have options, so that's great.
And I know we've got transitions in, in that regard to go through, too.
But I meant unfair to you, and to kind of say, like, okay, how do we do this and go about it, something.
We agree, that is unfair to us.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a smooth line to the rest of.
Thank you, no.
The rest of the agenda, hard.
Yeah, we've spun our wheels enough.
Well, I, I do have a question in regard to this whole project assignment spreadsheet we got.
Yes.
On the, on the, I believe it's on the third page. We already, and this could come later in the meeting. I'll bring it up again, because there is a specific agenda item. Elk Run Heights and Raymond is already on there for a million dollars for projects on hold. I'm going to ask that either now or later in the agenda, that La Porte City and Evansdale be added to the spreadsheet.
Well, and I believe the reason that Elk Run and Raymond are on here, James did a good job, in my opinion, did a very good job of keeping everything that had come before us somewhere on the, somewhere on the list. And those are on the list. They've never been approved, but they're, they're on the list. And so obviously, things can be added to that list, and we've got people on the committee who are maintaining and updating this list. And so those could be added to it if that's, you know, if that's something that's going to.
I think we heard from several communities.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was surprised to see just Elk Run Heights and Raymond on there.
I think that was because it was an official kind of request that they made for us. The others just kind of came and did.
Because we did get the other request, and I just want to make sure that they stay on the table, and we keep discussing them until the majority of the board decides otherwise.
Right. Well, I, I will, if we could have specified, we may have to go back and look at minutes of a prior meeting to make sure we get all of those on there, but we'll talk about including those in the list as possibilities.
And, and this is just an overall question, I guess, because the projects that are represented here, and the ones that we approved in Phase 1 and 2, I'm not certain that there aren't projects that fell off the list, maybe from board approved them but didn't get approved. So I'm wondering, does, do those lists reconcile? I know that we started off and it was kind of a joke, we had 101 projects, and we consolidated a lot of those in the request for Baker Tilly and the committee. But I'm wondering if there aren't some that fell out of the list and, you know, have been approved by the board, but we should be considering, or if it's been determined that we don't need, those don't qualify.
And I, I can't answer that question. I'm still familiarizing myself with the overall master list, if you will. That was maintained by the finance director, and the, the other committee members are familiarizing themselves with it as well. I think an example that probably speaks to what you're talking about, Ms. Layland, is the, there were a number of vehicles that were talked about, apparently approved, for the Health Department. I believe about 10% of that money has been spent. What I'm understanding.
On cars?
On cars, because there's $49,646 showing as having been spent on Health Department vehicles. I believe there's two vehicles that were purchased. My understanding is those don't fall under an expense category of ARPA, and therefore, that'll end up going to lost revenue. So some of this falls into that category, where if the money hasn't been expensed yet, as is the case with the other 450,000 of those dollars, maybe the board reconsider some of that. I'm not suggesting you do. I'm saying, we just wanted to make sure you were aware of that opportunity.
Well, I'm just thinking, since they were approved by the board, they need to be at least addressed in some way, that they fall off, or we decide not to do them, or we do them with other funds.
Well, and at the time. Maybe that whole issue should be brought back to us, so we can see it.
It was early on, and it was thought that virtually anything at Health would be approved, and we're, I think, you know, this is one of those surprises, that they, my understanding is that they're not approvable. Now, I haven't had that conversation with Baker Tilly myself. I have talked with, with James Perry about it, and he had those conversations, and he was adamant that they had to go under lost revenue. I know they've been, they've been properly procured.
Well, we did a lot of things during budget discussion, where we had budget items come up, and then it was like, could those qualify for ARPA and move them into ARPA? We may end up having to move those back into a budget, or reserves, or wherever.
Especially if they're high.
Yeah.
Would be prudent to schedule a meeting with Baker Tilly.
Yeah.
I would think so, soon.
So we want to make sure we're prepared, because they're not cheap.
And here's what I'm kind of thinking. So I'm going to have four days of trial next week, currently scheduled, unless something changes quickly. And that means I'm not going to be here next week for this meeting, so I'd prefer to be present when we have that discussion. I'd also prefer to have some time to discuss it with them beforehand. If my, if my last trial gets done on Friday afternoon at, at 4:00 PM, that's, that's not going to provide a lot of opportunity to have that discussion. Plus, we've, there's going to be some communication about schedules. So I'm wondering what you would think about. I think I'd be looking at the first meeting maybe in October, if that wouldn't be too far down the road to shoot for.
We need to be well-prepared for it, I guess, with the questions that we want to get for that meeting, so, yeah.
October 4th, or something like that.
That's when you're gone.
Well, let me, let me get a communication out to them, probably later today, just an email out to our contact there, and say, hey, we'd like, one of you available on, and I'll have to see what the first Tuesday of October is. I'll have to see what the first Tuesday of October is. But another question related to that is, what's the board's preference on in-person versus online presence of them for that? In-person is, you know, naturally, I consider it better when you, especially when the board is here in person. It's nice to see four here today, but it's going to be more expensive. There's going to be mileage, there's going to be travel time. There might be, depending on how they look at it, there could be an overnight stay somewhere involved as well. So that will add to the cost that we pay, but it'll probably add to the effectiveness. And otherwise, if, if we're, you know, if we're looking at two, three, or more of the board members appearing on Zoom, then I question, really question whether it's worthwhile, because we're, we're doing things electronically regardless.
I mean, I'll be here, I think, should be, in person. I'd be fine having them on Zoom just to try to save some cost with them.
And I, so that's, if that's the opinion of the rest of the board, I think we stick with Zoom as the, as the preferred method of meeting for now.
Well, we can try it, and if it doesn't work, and we think we'd get more benefit out of in-person, we can always have another one. Because when you mentioned one person coming, I thought, we've had one person that's been working exclusively with reviewing and evaluating these, and another that's kind of been oversight.
And actually, we're, we've got a third who's been working on the initial intake of these as well, so, yeah. All right. Any other questions right now? Okay, well, I'll wait till I'm called upon.
That would be what, yeah.
Moving on, received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. I'm just a county engineer. Last week, we held our ribbon cutting for Grundy Road. I think that was very successful. Several of you were in attendance, and we have had about 46 residents, contractors, other people show up for that, so the road is now open, of course. Another road that is reopening this morning is Eagle Road. That is from Daisert Road to US 218. That was our cold and place recycled with new asphalt being placed on top of that. That should be opening this morning as well. And then lastly, I wanted you to know that we have been coordinating with IODOT for that, that area in the southwest portion of the county, that the residents are impacted by the detouring traffic from the US 63 project. We have gotten desk control, desk control sprayed on most of the residences on Holmes Road, Lincoln Road, and Gibson Road down in that vicinity. So can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Have any of them got back with you, Kathy, about thanking you for it, or not lately?
We've gotten a few thank yous and a few, why didn't we get some?
Thank you. Morning, Amanda.
Good morning. Amanda Fazamara, Human Resources Director. Just wanted to draw attention to our employee cookout, which is on Sunday. So just a quick reminder, we have the department head meeting tomorrow, too, so we'll be discussing that there as well. If you didn't RSVP, that's okay, you're still welcome. It begins at noon at Hickory Hills at the lodge. And just really appreciate the committee that's put a lot of effort toward making a really fun event on a Sunday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Any online? Hearing none, moving on to minutes approved for September 6, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, it's a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Sorry, who moved in second then?
I moved.
I seconded, thank you.
I take that as yes, you're on mute, but how does it, aye?
You're muted.
Hold on.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a resolution to approve the IT network equipment project with an estimated cost of $550,000 to be paid for with ARP monies.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, it's a resolution, please, oh, you want to, you got anything you want to add to this?
No, I was just, if you ask any questions for me, so.
No. This resolution, please answer your name and it's called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution two, this is a resolution to approve the record digitizing project for the Blackhawk County's Recorder's Office with an estimated cost of $138,245 to be paid with ARPA money.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion, questions for recorder. Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution to approve the Conservation Headquarters' HVAC system replacement project with an estimated cost of $240,000 to be paid for with ARPA monies.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none.
Where was that at on the list?
Six. A six, Tom.
It had a six on it?
Yeah.
Was that approved by the board? I thought that one was pending.
I think it was.
It was, yes.
My understanding is that was previously approved.
Approved and paid.
Yeah. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the initial engineering for the Blackhawk Park Shower Renovation Project with an estimated cost of $10,000. That's a six, too.
Second.
It's only $10,000. This is a resolution, please answer your name and it's called.
Little?
Is that a six, you said, Craig?
Yeah, that's a six with $10,000 estimated cost.
Yeah, no.
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the initial engineering for the McFarland Park Septic Replacement System with an estimated cost of $7,900 to be paid with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. This is a resolution, please answer your name and it's called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, is a resolution to approve the Signal Cove Park Shower Facility Project with an estimated cost of $75,000 to be paid with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion. Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Next, a resolution to approve the ADA Accessible Playgrounds at Four County Parks with an estimated cost of $240,000 to be paid for with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussions. Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the Washburn Sewer Project with an estimated cost of $735,000 to be paid for with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the Hickory Hills Wastewater Treatment Project with an estimated cost of $525,000 to be paid for with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion. Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, is a resolution to approve the record digitizing project for the Blackhawk County's Auditor's Office with an estimated cost of $100,000 to be paid for with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion.
What was the rating on that one, Craig? Six?
That was a two.
Two?
Yep. With $100,000 cost. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the Elections Workstation Project with an estimated cost of $25,000 to be paid for with ARPA funds. That's a two, Tom.
That was not a two.
Oh.
The elections one was rated a seven.
Sorry. Thank you. I agree for that correction.
Do we get a motion?
My two looks like a seven, or my seven looks like a two. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the IT Emco software package with an estimated cost of $1,300 to be paid for with ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. This is, this, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution to approve the amendment to the, of the professional services contract between Snyder and Associates, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Blackhawk County, for Hickory Hills Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements Project utilizing ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion on this item.
Where was that rated at?
White?
This was, I believe, rated at a two. I'm going to double check. Yep, this was rated at a two. And this was a contract, I believe, that we've already entered into. It's just an amendment of that contract.
Thank you. Yeah, Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just real quick on this, we bid this three months ago. It was way overbid. I believe the, the low bid was $743,550. We had to wait three months to bid again. The only way we could bid again in that time period was the, the bid process, or the, it had to change significantly. We could not rebid it the way we bid it the first time. We have made those significant changes. This is, and this is why the added cost is in there, because Snyder and Associates has to do more work to change the bid process. Otherwise, we would have had to wait a lot longer before we could go out for bid. That's why it's been done this way.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your update. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
That's.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by LU IT Director be approved and direct to chair to sign for same to purchase 50 X Dell laptops for $54,499.50 from Dell to be across multiple departments within Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion on this item. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralca?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, is discussion, the use of ARPA funds for Blackhawk County Wastewater Treatment Projects. I think we've hashed that over. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Tralca?
I do. We covered a lot of ground, but I would, I see we have the mayors of these communities present, LaPorte City, Evansdale, we have a representative from Raymond, it looks like, mayor of Elk Run Heights. We have Elk Run Heights and Raymond on our spreadsheet. I would like to hear, with a million, a $1 million request, I for one would like to hear from the mayor of LaPorte City and Evansdale, for them to reiterate their request, and then get them added to the spreadsheet.
Can you send that in to us, or you want to hear it live?
If they'd like to make a brief, brief statement, I would appreciate it, because they've made their request before, but I would like to hear from them again.
Ms. Mayor, you have your figures with you for Evansdale?
Yes.
Good. Step up to the microphone, tell us your name and address.
Deanne Kobliski, 1660 West Gilbert Drive, Evansdale, Iowa. Right now, currently, we are approaching going out for bid for our project, which is rehabilitation, including E. coli and distribution as well. That is going to be $8.3 million. I would like to, for the Blackhawk County Supervisors, to please consider an allocation of $1 million in American Rescue Funds to the city of Evansdale. The funds will be used to help offset the increasing monthly cost to our residents due to DNR mandated upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. The upgrades currently, like I already stated, are over $8.3 million. Evansdale residents are paying an annual increase of $2.50 per month. This was on a five-year basis that we originally scheduled it, started back in 2018, and that will continue, obviously, because we'll need the funds to build upon this program. As a taxpaying citizen of Evansdale, and also of a resident of Blackhawk County, I would like your consideration.
How much money do we got saved up in Evansdale for that project?
Currently, we're about $600,000. We're also going to be applying, again, doing a survey for low to moderate income, because the one we did three years ago expired already. So we're going to seek requests from Community Development Block Grant. There's also another grant out there that may help offset costs. You know, obviously, we're going to do our due diligence.
So four years.
I got a question for Deanne.
Yep, she's still here.
This DNR requirements, I think they came to light for all the cities, including Waterloo, the Evansdells, Evansdale, probably about four or five years ago, didn't it? They were going to mandate fines if you didn't take actions, start moving on.
That is correct.
Yeah. So really, they didn't have anything to do with COVID. It's just the DNR mandated new regulations that were going to affect all the cities, and that's why you're seeing all the improvements.
Well, Supervisor Little, I have to disagree with you. Because of COVID, it is becoming harder and harder on a daily basis, especially for our families. I mean, I can't imagine, it's just my husband and I, I can't imagine a family of four going to the grocery store. And then they have to fill up their tank. They have to, you know, provide daycare. Those are, you know, those costs are exceeding. All the costs are a result of COVID.
Yeah, no, that's not what I was asking. I was just pretty much making a statement that the improvements of all these sewer facilities throughout Blackhawk County are due to a DNR mandate that was issued about four years ago.
That is correct, but continuing going forward with the increases, it's a little bit more difficult for our residents than it was even three years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Next, mayor up. Name and address, and where are your mayor at?
My name's Jasmine Gaston, mayor of LaPorte City. My address is 720 Locust Street, LaPorte. I would like to reiterate what she said about costs for consumers. While our projects are not COVID-based or COVID-required, our cost has gone from $3 million to $10 million, part of because of DNR requirements, and partially because materials are extremely more expensive than what they would have been before COVID. Our taxpayers and our residents currently pay, or I guess on July 31st, we're paying a debt service charge of $13 a month. We increased that to $24 a month August 1st. January 1st, that'll go to $35 a month, and by July 1st, 2023, they will be paying $55 a month. By fiscal year '24, we'll need to have that raised to $60 a month. They will be going from paying $156 a year as just their debt service portion of their sewer bill to $720 a year. And they're going to have regular sewer water electric rate increases over the years as well. I ask that you consider LaPorte City's wastewater treatment project has a place to distribute some of your ARPA funds to ease the burden to not my taxpayers, they're our taxpayers. They elect you as well as they elect me, and I think it's important to consider their needs and I think it's important to consider their needs as well. So I would like to be listed down as a community that receives those funding, if that's something you so choose to approve.
What amount would you like to see?
I would like to see a million.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for, hearing none? Both of you, please turn a report in to Dana of what you want and your explanations of what you're doing to try to alleviate the cost. Any other mayors? The others have spoken. We'll move, any, anything else you need on that, Dan?
Nope.
Moving on to discussion, board supervisors attending events open to the public and the attendance criteria required for a quorum to continue constitute a meeting.
Now, Mike covered, I put this on the agenda. Mike covered it pretty good, but I think we needed clarification with the whole board, as well as with our employees, because I got a text from an employee that said I couldn't attend the ribbon cutting because one of the supervisors said it would constitute a meeting. When I was involved in law enforcement for 30 years, I always relied upon common sense. One time, I was in a pursuit, in a pursuit with a car. It stopped at an intersection, the occupants fled, and I didn't know whether I could search that car or not. Sensibility told me I could, and I said to myself, I bet you I'll find case law afterwards that's going to support my decision, and it did. So I attended the ribbon cutting without getting an opinion from Mike. And then I asked for an opinion from Mike, and Mike validated what my sensibility told me. So I think the public needs to hear, our elected officials need to hear, and in particular, our employees need to hear what a meeting is and when, and when we need to establish a, a meeting, an agenda. Because we have the picnic coming up, and I'm thinking, my God, if three of us are there, are we going to have to have an agenda?
And, and again, well, go ahead. I, I, it's not my opinion that we need to have an agenda or notice prior to the picnic. Admittedly, it creates a gray area whenever you have a quorum of supervisors gathered together for, for any event, literally. But the code has considered these circumstances. Now, I think the, the viewpoint opposed to Dan's would probably say, well, you know, this was a county business item, but the way I perceived it is that it was more of a, a social item and that the board was not going to be doing any deliberating, and that's really our, our, the line we have to draw. Under Chapter 21 of the code, it defines a meeting as a gathering in person or by electronic means, formal or informal, of a majority of the members of a governmental body where there is deliberation or action upon any matter within the scope of the governmental body's policymaking duties. Meetings shall not include a gathering of members of a governmental body for purely ministerial or social purposes where there is no discussion of policy or no intent to avoid the purposes of this chapter. Because of the fact that the ribbon cutting was, was more of a ceremony, I didn't understand there to be any discussion or intent to discuss any item of county business while there. It is my opinion that the attendance by a majority of the board of supervisors at that meeting did not violate the rule. In addition to that, and it didn't constitute a meeting under public meetings law. In addition to that, I would note that I verified that the supervisors who attended this meeting did not ride together, so there weren't any of those kind of clandestine discussions going on in a car, or something like that, either.
Although two of us could have ridden together, just.
Two of you could have, exactly, but my understanding was there was separate cars among the three.
Yeah.
I don't think any of us spoke to one another, other than maybe saying hi.
Right, yeah, and that would be social.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment here, because I think Supervisor Treoka was addressing me without actually addressing me. I did not tell Kathy, the county engineer, that no county elected official could go to that, especially a supervisor. I said it'd be a good idea to do a check to see who's all going and check into that to make sure that that's okay to do that. The board, over the years, had a case that was brought to them from the state of Iowa where a county that had a three-member board, two of them drove in a car to Des Moines to attend a meeting up there. And the State Iowa Ethics Board considered that as being a quorum in that car, even though they couldn't prove that they were talking county business. But that being aside, it's always, it's something that we're not going to decide. I'm not going to, Supervisor Treoka isn't, neither is Assistant County Attorney. The Iowa State Ethics Board is the one that watches this and controls it. I don't know how you could ever disagree that if you're going to have an event like this, the smart and in this common sense, the common sense thing to do is what Grundy County did, was to post it as a board meeting and held an actual meeting, which this board has done in the past, when we got on a bus or so forth to go somewhere. So that's the only thing. I didn't say that nobody could go there. I don't have the authority to tell each and every one of you what to do. It's your own business, but it's just, again, this common sense theme, and this has nothing to do with police work, by the way. Common sense thing is, why not put the agenda out just in case the attorney just said it was a gray area? And move on, just like Grundy County did. Apparently, Grundy County thought it was important enough to do it. So I was just mentioning to Kathy, maybe that's what we'd want to do, and obviously, that wasn't done, so.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Moving on to discussion, interim duties in the absence of a finance director.
We had gotten an email from Billy Joe Heath with some, I think, some fantastic recommendations, since we have a lot of finance director right now, and I thought it would be prudent to us just to formalize this process, have an open public discussion about it, formalize it, and then proceed accordingly so we could take care of business effectively and efficiently. Now, did everybody see the email?
I don't think so.
The process that Billy Joe proposed were, are as follows. Invoices received within the board office are coded and entered by Kayla. Number two, point number two, Billy Joe will review the invoices and approve them electronically. Number three, invoices are presented to the board chair to review and sign.
Been being done.
Item number four, once approved electronically, they are routed to our office, the auditor's office, to be audited. Point number five, invoices to be approved for payment by the board of supervisors are included on the AP Claims listing, which is sent by Cheryl on Fridays. And point number six, our office scans the original invoices into the accounting system, and they are filed away.
I think it's all been being done, hasn't it, Billy Joe? Yep, we've been doing it that way for. Formalize it.
I just, so when I sent the email, I had already talked to Craig. I would just want to keep business going in the office. And so that's why I sent the email, was so that all the board members were aware of if that was the process that we would do going forward. So that's where that email came from.
I think my comment was, it was all right with you. You were the one signing and doing approvals, so as long as it worked for you.
Most, most of the procedure was already in place. Billy, why don't you just describe this, the changes that were made?
Oh, sure. So really, the only thing is, is that normally, the finance director would actually be doing the, the approving of the invoices. I could still go in and approve those electronically to keep it moving through the workflow, but I thought it would be a good idea for somebody in the board office to be reviewing those invoices to make sure that they, they look okay as well, so I'm not the, I have a segregation of duties there. That's that part. And then also, the other part was on the timesheets, but it sounds like you'll go ahead and approve Kayla's timesheet, so.
Mike or Grant, do you recommend formal, the board taking any formal action in regard to this process?
I'd only recommend against it, because it's not listed on here for formal action.
And I, I don't, you know, if, that would set a precedent for formalizing by board action a whole lot of practices that, that we don't typically do that with.
I agree with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Craig, for approving those invoices.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yep. Any reports or information from the board? I just got one comment I'd like to make. This weekend, we had the Vietnam Veterans Reunion, which we've had, or not reunion. Vietnam veterans vigil, 45 hours, one hour per person that was killed in Vietnam. These guys give up their lives for us, so we can live like we are now. There's a lot of us Vietnam vets that have got problems from being in Vietnam that still live, memories that live with us to this day. I spent 35 out of the 45 hours down there, and the biggest crowd we had was 12 people. Shame on Blackhawk County that you forgot the Vietnam veterans. Shame on you. Quite a few of them grew up in your communities. Most of them were my buddies, most of them were my friends, and they didn't get to live to see a damn day back here, so shame on each and every one of you. I bet you go have a good time someplace else and don't even think a thing about it. They fought for this country and made it what it is today. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor of aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.